Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting of the Harrisonville Board of Aldermen to order. If you would stand and recite the pledge with us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. May we have a roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Franklin?
Present.
Alderman Turner?
Present.
Alderman Zaring?
Present.
Alderman Milner?
Present.
Alderman Reese?
Present.
Alderman Mills?
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Present.
Mayor Bowman?
Present, thank you. We do have a quorum. Welcome, everyone, this evening. We have no ceremonial matters this evening. I know we do have some public participation. I believe we had an agenda request form submitted. Mr. Ratliff?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, Marcy Baumel, good evening. It's good to see you again. If you would, please, begin by giving your name and address for the record, and then City Attorney Maurer will tell you how this works. Okay? Perfect.
Marcy Baumel, and I am at 1300 East Elm, Harrisonville.
Thank you. You can start. You have three minutes.
Okay. Real quickly, I just, I wanted to introduce myself, and I just wanted to let everyone know that we have recently formed a 501(c)(3) committee organization to partner with the city of Harrisonville and the animal shelter, just for all of us to work together to make improvements, give consumables, those types of things. And thank you to my Alderman, Marcy Milner, for sitting down with me months and months and months ago and going over this. Mr. Ratliff for helping get all this started. Chief Ofer isn't here tonight. We had our first committee meeting last week. We have the most fabulous committee ever. So I'm just going to let them introduce themselves real quick. Is that okay? Or do they need to?
Absolutely.
Okay. There's the committee.
Why don't you stand and give us your names? If you'll stand and give us your name, that gives you the opportunity to show off your shirt, so.
My name is Tasha Hamilton, and I am actually going to be starting this upcoming Monday as the animal control supervisor. So I have not actually officially taken over yet, and that won't, but I will. And I actually live in Raymore, what it's supposed to be.
We won't hold that against her.
My name is Cheryl Bush. Marcy came to me and asked me if I would help, and Marcy's got to say no to. So this is going to be a great organization, and thank you to all you that have helped to get it started.
Well, thank you, Sheriff, for all you've done at the animal shelter and adopting all the cats. I mean, you're just a great friend.
It's my thing.
I'm Missy now, and I can't say no to Marcy. I'm Cindy Witham, again, can't say no to Marcy. Ron Wilsey, Marcy, and Cheryl.
I'm Cindy Baumel, and I can't say no.
She didn't say no.
But I have some past experience with rescue, and so I'm pretty passionate about it. That's why I chose this.
Wonderful.
Thank you. And the reason two of them can't say no to me is because Missy and Cindy were both former students, and I liked them. Thank you so much for letting us. Oh, Sandy. I'm sorry. I know. Yes. And?
Sandy Franklin, and I too could not say no to Marcy. We're all guilty.
But anyway, thank you all. And Sandy kind of came to a meeting in the very, very beginning with Mr. Ratliff and Chief Ofer, and I didn't let her get out the door without saying yes.
Well, thank you, Marcy, and thank you to all the volunteers. We all love the animal shelter, and we're glad that you do, too. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, then, to the approval of the minutes. I'd like to ask you, please, to silence your cellphones at this time, and we'll let the volunteers leave the building. Good night. All right. The first set of minutes are the minutes from the regular meeting of November 7th. They were available to you in your packet. If you don't have any corrections, I'll entertain a motion for their passage.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Alderman Zaring with a second from Alderman Franklin. All in favor of the approval of those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved as printed. The minutes of the work session from November 7th also were available in your packet. If you don't have any corrections, I'll entertain a motion for their passage.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Reese. All in favor of the approval of the minutes of the work session, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved as printed. Item C are the minutes of the executive session, November 7th. Those were available to you in a sealed envelope at your desk. If you've had a chance to review those and sign those and return those to the city clerk, I'll entertain a motion for their passage. Motion to approve.
Second.
Was that Alderman Reese?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion from Alderman Reese with a second from Alderman Dorhoff. A roll call, please.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson is excused.
Thank you. The minutes of the executive session stand approved as printed. Moving on to the agenda items. Board, we're going to take just one item out of order on the agenda. We're going to actually start with item H and move it up where it is councilable 87. We have Mr. Hart in the audience this evening, and he needs to leave to go out of town, so we said we would accommodate him and move him up on the agenda. So we'll go with councilable 87, which I think?
No wonder you said you'd be quick tonight, Ben.
He's ready to go.
Yes, I did promise that I'd be quick. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Board of Aldermen.
We just met, Mr. Hart. We need first reading first.
This is first reading.
91. Yeah. Councilball 87 is in ordinance to the Harrisonville Board of Aldermen adopting operating budget for the city of Harrisonville, Missouri for the fiscal year January 1, 2023, through December 31, 2023. First hearing, Councilball 87.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mayor and members of the Board of Aldermen, I'm presenting to you tonight the first, for the first reading, city's fiscal year 2023-year budget. This budget's $51,832,000 of operating and capital expenses. From a financial perspective, the budget leverages grant applications for significant projects in areas such as the airport runway in 2024, three stormwater projects, $4.8 million, as well as cash-funded projects such as the sour, South Sewer System project and the potential renovation of the North Park Athletic Fields. This budget recognizes a conservative 3% growth in sales tax for '23. Current trends in '22 are leading to potential 6% increase from year-to-year sales tax, with an expectation for that to continue, that growth to continue. Also included in this budget is two police officers, for which one is contingent on revenue benchmarks through February. And along with that is a lineman within the electric fund. 4% is set aside for pay increases, 15% healthcare premium increases, along with 25% to 75% various line item increases such as fuel and chemicals, kind of an inordinate here for a lot of city budgets. This budget continues the board directive toward a long-term outlook for concurrent decisions. Staff updated the five-year forecast in order to begin planning the operating deficits with a long-term forecast in the emergency service fund and a cap on subsidies to the parks. Transfers have been included in the general fund to cover estimated deficits for both of those funds. The positive part of this note is that we can plan now to correct the future. And we've done that ever since I began working with you guys. In conclusion, 2023 will indeed be a busy year for both project construction and potential improvement in parks and athletic fields. City continues to see new improvements in its tax base on a regular basis. We don't expect this to stop, especially within this budget. We anticipate this growth to continue into the foreseeable future. Some mayor staff's asking for the first reading on this budget, and the second reading would be scheduled December 5th on that agenda. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Hart? This is a first reading only.
Thanks for all your work on this. I think he's got a question.
Alderman Mills?
The grant money, and of course, already in your report later and in this week's weekly thing, you know, where we're getting $4 million and it's coming to city funds. Are the American Rescue Plan funds, I know they're still in reserve held. Is that part of the plan?
Yeah. We've always budgeted the ARPA funds to be spent, so that's no different in '23.
Okay. And then the public's going to read this thing, so a little clarification, maybe. So on page 156 of this report, which is the general fund summary budget and the, and the sales tax you spoke of. So on page one of your document where you recap, it says, actually, page two, it says the sales tax has been adjusted 3% increase over the '22 budget estimate.
Right.
So if you look at the line item on page 156, the budget estimate isn't close to reality, which I think you probably looked, used more reality, because the difference there is 17%. And a public might pick up on that.
You're right. And that's a good point. I'll clarify that. Just for edification for tonight, what we typically do when we start the budget, we'll, we'll actually estimate where the year's going to end.
Right.
And then, based on that number, we'll grow 3%, but you're exactly right. Now, we'll clarify that in the final document.
Yeah. Because you estimate it on an estimate, and in reality?
It was much different.
3%, your, your ending result is, in my opinion, correct.
Yes. Yeah. You're right. Yeah. I'll just change it.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all I had.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Ben. All right. Councilball 88.
Councilball 88 is in ordinance to the Board of Aldermen, the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, establishing Section 700.790 of the Harrisonville Municipal Code. First hearing, Councilball 88.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. It's good to be back in person. This is the ordinance that I talked to you about, about doing the locates for only locating city of Harrisonville utilities only for the electric department. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Pollard before we open the public hearing? Seeing no questions, I'll at this time open the public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the board about this ordinance before us, you may please step to the podium now. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on. Go ahead.
Councilball 88 is in ordinance to the Board of Aldermen, the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, establishing Section 700.790 of the Harrisonville Municipal Code, Secretary Council 088.
And this is an ordinance board?
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Milner to suspend the rule on Councilball 88 and move it to a second reading. A roll call, please.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson is excused.
Thank you. Second reading.
Councilball 88 is in ordinance to the Board of Aldermen, the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, establishing Section 700.790 of the Harrisonville Municipal Code, Secretary Council 088.
Can I roll call, please?
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson is excused.
Thank you. Councilball 88 is approved and becomes ordinance 3613. I apologize, I misspoke on that public hearing. That was not needed. We do now have Councilball 89, which does have a public hearing. So Ms. Stanton, you're going to tell us about the special use permit for 1704 Waters Road.
Yes. And I'm going to start with talking about the previous special use that was granted by the board for five years, renewal thereafter on October 2nd of 2017, and also point out that the application for renewal was submitted prior to that deadline. It was submitted September 30th, 2022. We were not able to get it on the agenda for P&amp;Z at that time, so that's why it kind of got pushed down. So the applicant is requesting a 10-year renewal period to focus on the auxiliary building and replacing the temporary building that is in place. They do have listed on their application on page two some of the reasons, financial conditions and things that happened, why they did not get it done within that five-year period. So staff is recommending approval. We do have two conditions for the requested special use for two mobile trailers serving as temporary classrooms. With these two conditions, the special use permit shall be extended for a period of time not to exceed 10 years from the expiration of the previously approved special use, which will make it expire October 2nd, 2032. And the second condition, just to make sure things move along in a kind of expeditious way, we want to make sure the applicant comes in and provides a detailed timeline for the planned expansion within a year from approval of this special use. So if there's any hiccups, maybe they can kind of build that into that timeline, but making sure that it's completed well within that 10 years.
Questions of Ms. Stanton before we open the public hearing? Alderman Milner?
Why did we, why did we go for 10 years instead of just an additional five?
The applicant requested 10, and I did some consideration on this, and 10 is the maximum that I would feel comfortable with. I did think about, well, we should just give them only five more, but since they requested that, I thought, okay, well, I'll let them make that case. I do not feel comfortable going any further than that, though.
Any other questions for Ms. Stanton? Okay. All right. Seeing no questions, I will open the public hearing then on the special use permit for 1704 Waters Road. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to address the board, please step forward.
If I'm representing Cornerstone for this, I don't know that I need to speak to the board necessarily.
If you just give your name and address?
Yeah. Joe Chinwath. 27804 South Bill School Road, Harrisonville, Missouri.
Hi, Joe.
How are you?
Good.
This is new.
No, this isn't new, but this is new. This has been here. It's just been white. It's whiter. Yeah. Yeah. So, any questions? Hi, Sandy, how you doing?
How are you?
Good.
Okay. Alderman Milner has a question for you.
Joe, I'm sorry. I didn't recognize you either.
No problem.
So, would it be a problem? I, 10 years to me is a lot of time, especially for a church to me. If you can't maybe come up with the funding in another five years, then it's probably not maybe down the road going to happen.
Yeah.
I just, I mean, I could, I would really almost rather see just the five years, and then if in five years we need another extension, we can relook at, at how it's going then. But to me, 10 years is a, a long period of time. What was, what, I mean?
Well, I was asked about three hours ago to step in for Justin Sharp, who is supposed to be here with you this evening, because he had a daughter's thing. I, I would think that, I, I don't know that a five-year or 10-year is an issue either way. It's either going to, we're going to expand or do something with that, or we're not, you know? If we have the ability to come in at the end of five years to say, here's what our plan was, you had asked for a plan, here's what the plan was, here's what, you know, again, if we go back to this, part of, part of the timeframe of five years ago to now, we had life happen, we had COVID happen, we had everybody rebuilding happening. So to be able to look out five years and say, here's what should be able to be done, we just went through a two- or three-year span of time that said we didn't see any of that coming, right? But again, Marcy, going back to your question, I think a five-year approval would not be something that would be a major issue, again, assuming we'd have the ability to come back in and say, life happened, you know? So.
Alderman Dorhoff, you're leaning forward, looking at something.
Yeah. Well, I've seen the trailers. They take really good care of them.
Hi, Dave, how you doing?
Good. So I don't have a problem with the 10 years, because even though they're mobile trailers, they do a really good job of making them look nice.
Yeah. I think the one thing I would, I would agree with that is, you know, this was set up originally by Ted Zellmer and our church, and Ted was like, this is how we're going to do it, and this is how it's going to be. And it does look as permanent as it can possibly look. You know, the ramps and the decks to it are in a great shape in that way. So again, would agree with that.
They did a nice skirting on it, so you can't see that it's a mobile trailer.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Joe? Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the board? Seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to Councilball 89.
Councilball 89 is in ordinance to the Board of Aldermen, the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, approving a special use permit renewal for Cornerstone Community Church to continue to have two existing mobile trailers being utilized as temporary classrooms for a period not to exceed 10, 10 years on land located at 1704 Waters Road in the city of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri. First hearing, Councilball 89.
So this is an ordinance board?
So can I ask another question? So I guess my question would be, too, in the past, like when schools have the additional trailers or when any other business have the additional trailers, do we have a timeframe of what we had done in the past as far as timeframe-wise?
Well, I know a special use permit can be granted for up to 10 years. So no one would have a special use permit longer than 10 years.
I just, I think I would like to maybe back that off, just, I mean, I mean, they look really nice now, but in five years, they're going to be five years older, and they may not look as nice. And I think, you know, maybe that would be an incentive to.
So would you like for us to vote on the 10-year?
I mean, it does. If I can get any other way.
You can just make a motion to amend it from 10 years to five years.
I'd like to see.
You can make a motion to amend.
I don't have much of a problem, because I know the holders of the church, and they're not going to let it go, they're not going to let it deteriorate to a point that it looks bad and it's non-functional. We'll either scrapping it rid of it, or we'll bring it up to where it used to be.
So we have a, we have a motion to amend Councilball 89 as far as the time period not to exceed 10 years. We're amending that to be no more than five years. Is there a second to that motion?
I'm not second, then.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I'll second it.
Okay. So we have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Zaring to suspend the rule on Councilball 89 as amended and move it to a second reading.
You have to first vote on the amendment.
Thank you. Thank you for setting me straight. So first of all, we want to vote on the amendment to amend the timeframe from 10 years to five years. So I'll take a roll call on that.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Nay.
Alderman Mills?
Nay.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Nay.
Alderman Turner?
Nay.
Alderman Davidson is excused.
So by my count, there's three ayes and four nays, correct? Okay. So the amendment fails. So now we'll.
Need a motion to pass it to second reading.
Now we need a motion to, okay. So we need a motion to move it to a second reading as printed.
Make a motion to suspend the rule and take it to a second reading?
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Mills to advance Councilball 89 as printed to a second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Thank you. Second reading.
Councilball 89 is in ordinance to the Board of Aldermen, the city of Harrisonville, approving a special use permit renewal for Cornerstone Community Church to continue to have two existing mobile trailers being utilized as temporary classrooms for a period not to exceed 10 years on land located at 1704 Waters Road in the city of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri. Secretary Council 089.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson is excused.
Thank you. Councilball 89 is approved and becomes ordinance 3614. Item D is another public hearing.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Thank you, Joe. City initiated rezoning of properties within the block south of Pine Street, west of King Avenue, north of Walnut Street, and rezoning properties located at the northeast corner of Elm and Marshall Streets. Hello, Ms. Stanton.
Hello. So this was brought forward by the planning and zoning. They requested staff to look into the R1B, R2B properties when we were looking at Osmer. And then, at the same time after we had that hearing, they asked us to look into the R3 properties to see if there were properties that were not matching the zoning districts for their use. Staff identify, had identified the R1 block that is actually duplex uses and partially R2, or right now, R2B, previously. And then, after looking at the R3, R4 properties and things like that as well to see if there were any others, only identified the one that Mr. Woods had mentioned at P&amp;Z. There were a number of others that were identified in our research, but they were such that it was kind of a hodgepodge, a little mix of duplex and single-family and triplex, quads and stuff. And so there wasn't a, a good way to get at that without creating spot zoning. And so these areas are in the 1912 Harrisonville original town, which predates any of our original zoning. A lot of those were developed that way, which, of course, allowed a variety of different types of residential. And this is kind of how we're, where we're at right now. This is kind of how we're, where we're at right now. So in an effort to better align the existing uses with the existing zoning districts and not create spot zoning, staff has recommended rezoning these two areas, the properties within the block south of Pine, west of King, and north of Walnut Street, from R1B, which is near downtown, single-family neighborhood, to the R2B, which is a near downtown, two-family residential district, and the property at the northeast corner of Elm and Marshall Streets, 902 East Elm Street, from R3 Cluster or Garden Type Residential District, to the R1B, near downtown, single-family neighborhood. Staff has talked with property owners for both properties, they are supportive of this, happy about having it cleaned up. In addition, the properties, like I said, do match with the other zoning in that area.
Questions for Ms. Stanton before we open the public hearing? All right, thank you, thank you for cleaning that up. At this point, I'll open the public hearing on this matter. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the board, feel free to step to the podium. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to Council Bill 90.
Council Bill 90 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen, the City of Harrisville, approving a city-initiated rezoning from near downtown, single-family neighborhood district R1B, to near downtown, two-family residential district R2B, for properties located within the block south of Pine Street, west of King Avenue, and north of Walnut Street, and rezoning from Cluster or Garden Type Residential District R3, to near downtown, single-family neighborhood district R1B, for property located at the northeast corner of Elm and Marshall Streets in the City of Harrisville, Cass County, Missouri. First read of Council 08, 090.
Thank you, this is another ordinance board.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and pass it to the second reading.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Mills, with a second from Alderman Milner, to suspend the rule on Council Bill 90 and advance it to a second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson is excused.
Thank you, second reading.
Council Bill 090 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen, the City of Harrisville, approving a city-initiated rezoning from near downtown, single-family neighborhood district R1B, to near downtown, two-family residential district R2B, for properties located within the block south of Pine Street, west of King Avenue, and north of Walnut Street, and rezoning from Cluster or Garden Type Residential District R3, to near downtown, single-family neighborhood district R1B, for property located at the northeast corner of Elm and Marshall Streets in the City of Harrisville, Cass County, Missouri. Second read of Council 090.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson is excused.
Thank you, Council Bill 90 is approved, and becomes ordinance 3615. Another public hearing.
At least this is the last one for me tonight.
Yes.
So this is the land use table and related code updates that was before the board, middle of last month, for work session. Same type of information as previously, you know, we're trying to clean up, because currently, the uses for each district are listed under those individual districts, and so the, the land use table will make it a lot cleaner and simpler for the general public, developers and staff, to know what uses are allowed in what districts, and be able to make clean changes and updates as needed. There is a clean copy, as well as a markup copy for everything in your packet, to also make it nice and easy. This will also eliminate some of the issues with special uses that didn't have any other references anywhere, and was special use across the board. We did, in that work session, discuss a number of those to keep that way. The towers was one that you wanted me to research, and I did contact Steve and Alex and talk with them on that. There were no issues with that, so we left that one as is. And, trying to think if there's anything else that I've really left off, because I, I know you guys have seen this previously. I don't think I necessarily need to rehash anything, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Stanton before we open the public hearing? Planning and zoning was really pleased to see this, so. All right, thank you, Christina.
Thank you.
At this point, we'll open the public hearing then. If there's anyone that wishes to address the board on this matter, please step forward to the podium. And seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to Council Bill 91.
Council Bill 91 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen, the City of Harrisville, Missouri, adding numbers, definitions, and sections 405-030B, amending sections 405-110A, 405-125A, 405-135A, 405-147B, and F, 405-150A, 405-165A, 405-177B, and F, 405-180, 405-200A, 405-215A, 405-245A, 405-275A, and 405-295A, 405-315A, 405-485A, 405-505A, 405-525C, 405-66A, 660A, and 405-665A, of the Harrisville Municipal Code and establishing an appendix of land use table of Chapter 405 zoning regulations and establishing an effective date. First read of Council 090, 091.
Did you get all that, Daniel?
Daniel, did you get all that?
So it's an ordinance.
Mean and suspend the rule and take it to a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff, with a second from Alderman Milner, to suspend the rule on Council 91, Council Bill 91, and move it to a second reading. A roll call, please.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson is excused.
Thank you, second reading.
Council Bill 091 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen, the City of Harrisville, Missouri, adding a number of definitions to sections 405.030B, amending sections 405-110A, 405-125A, 405-135A, 405-147B, and F, 405-150A, 405-165A, 405-177B, and F, 405-180A, 405-200A, 405-215A, 405-245A, 405-275A, 405-295A, 405-315A, 405-485A, 405-505A, 405-525C, 405-660A, and 405-665A, of the Harrisville Municipal Code and establishing an appendix of land use table of Chapter 405 zoning regulations and establishing an effective date. Second read of Council 091.
Our roll call, please.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson is excused.
Thank you, Council Bill 91 is approved, and becomes ordinance 3616. And if council gets tired of being in the legal field, he can do commercials on TV for drug interaction.
That's right.
Be very good at it.
Okay, thank you, council. Alderman in committee reports. Alderman Mills?
Um, you first. No, just back on that planning, the two things we just did, thanks to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the staff involved in all that, because I did that for years, and they did a lot of work on that, and that Osmer thing was over a year ago, and maybe started spurting some of that stuff, and it's just been a long time to fruition, and a lot of work, so thank you on all that. And then Carl, I saw your pictures of those manholes smoking, and I was so good when we found that infiltration, and then so sad when I see the new reports. And, and, but you know, one of those manholes, I think, is down there before it goes into the plant. I don't know, I'm just out of memory seeing that one manhole. And I've seen that when the water has geysered out of that, probably eight feet tall. So there's no doubt, there's, there's damage to the infrastructure of that manhole with that stuff blasting out of there, that it does smoke, if that's the same manhole, but it looks to me like it is. So, okay, good luck.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Turner? Okay, Alderman Milner?
I have nothing, I just wish everybody has a happy holiday coming up, and eat lots and rest up.
Thank you.
Because y'all have done a lot of work.
Alderman Zaring?
Yep, I'll just kind of piggyback on that there, thanks to all the staff, enjoy the holidays, definitely Thanksgiving, and on into Christmas and all of that. Well earned, everybody's worked hard, we appreciate all your hard work to make our jobs easy, for sure. Also to, you know, coming up onto the winter season, so we're gonna have snow, we're gonna have snow removal, probably some electrical outages, all kinds of other things like that, roads department gonna be busy, just ask that, no, no electrical outages, I'm sorry, I misspoke there. Not at my house anyways, so.
We know where we're coming from.
For sure.
But, yeah, be careful, make sure you focus on safety, and keep everybody safe and warm out there, that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman Franklin?
Last Tuesday was the park board meeting, there was discussion about the day rates at the outdoor pool, and possibly increasing them. Right now, the current rate is $7. If people are willing to sign up and register and do the rec track, which is providing the outdoor pool admin, some telephone numbers and addresses and phone numbers that they can be reached at, it is, they are considering to allow them to stay at the same rate at $7. If they are not willing to do that, then there will be a price increase, they're still debating as to what that price increase might be. There was also a discussion on the age limit for children, right now is at the age of nine, it is going to be increased to the age of 11, which is keeping up with the other communities, Raymore, Pleasant Hill, the community center itself is at the age of 11. There was a change in the donation and memorial fund, the young gentleman who went to the park and ended his life there, their families have been bringing out flowers, and they were accumulating, and it was problematic, so they approached grants as far as possibly getting a bench or something like that, that would be a little bit nicer to have there underneath the tree. And so what they did is there's going to be an application that they will need to fill out, and then that will be submitted. If it is approved, then they can make a donation to the Truman Heartland Foundation, and, and then they will go from there to have the bench purchased and so forth. So there was a change with that. And right now, the sauna is almost completed. If they had a full week this week, I think that would have been finished, but being the holidays, so it is not, but it's soon going to be finished, and then everybody can start enjoying it. And I am with everybody else, I hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving, and thank all of the city staff for all of the hard work that you do for all of us, making us look good, and just be safe in your travels, and have a lot of fun with your families.
Thank you. Alderwoman Reese?
I think it's all pretty much been said. Have good holidays, and, and enjoy your families.
Thank you. Alderman Dorhoff?
Kind of a similar thing, everybody traveling to see family this week, have a safe and happy Thanksgiving. And Andy did give me his personal guarantee that there will be no outages this winter. Said all the squirrels are popsicles. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
One more thing?
Yes, ma'am.
I am so grateful that we do not live in Buffalo.
Oh, no.
Because the street crews would really be working on it, so I am grateful we don't have to be there.
All right, report from the city administrator, Mr. Ratliff.
Yes, ma'am. As was pointed out by the Alderman, this Thursday, Friday, city hall will be closed. Christmas on the Square will be December 3rd from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and the Merry Christmas tree lighting will start at 6:00 on the square on the south side of the courthouse steps. It was alluded to a little earlier, but we were successful in receiving four million in stormwater grants, the Ash Culvert replacement, Town Creek Channel restoration. Some of you may ask what that is, but you know, Ash Street, with the flooding issues that has always been there, this would help remedy that problem. The Pecrotite Storm Drainage Improvement, and the grant was in James Street, as well as the Lead Service Line Inventories Project, which we received the money for that, which is going around and look at all of our lines and inventory of our lines and meters and all those things. So it was about four million in grant projects for stormwater, which is a, a great opportunity for the community.
Oh, wow.
As well as doing that, the Department Transportation Smart Grant through the Missouri Municipal League Application for the South Commercial Street Extension Project, for the amount of 661,000, was due on the 18th that we turned in for that. MoDOT staff are still working on the final, the cost share grant for the Missouri 7 Bridge and Muddy Creek Tributary. If you all recall, we could receive over $900,000 from Mark for that project. We also turned it in for a cost share project, so instead of coming up with 500,000 for cost share, there are, with a cost share, it'll be 140,000 that we would have to come up with. So that's better numbers for us. As well as, we also re, they had their first vote in Cass County, Mark and the SDP grants for the 2025-26 budget, is that the right fist fingers? 25-26. We were the only community in Cass County that received funding for the Independence and Two Highway Intersection Project, and the widening that's needed in that area for that project. So kudos to Carl, and, and some behind the scenes that Brad had to do, but we were glad to get the money to come to Cass County, but more importantly, for Harrisville, for that project as well. The I-49 Highway 7 diversion Diamond Interchange Meeting was the 14th, and they're advertising the project on the 6th of March, and they're taking bids in May, so that's gonna be a project moving up for next year to be completed. The Lake Harrisonville intake riser structure and outflow pipe, we did not like the bids that came in, and so Carl and Ted are working with value engineering to see if they can get those numbers down, to be with more in our budget line. Street maintenance advertised and bids are coming in for tomorrow, and then the generator maintenance contract, we have 14 generators, citywide, 12? 12 generators citywide. And so we're making sure we have one contractor to service all our generators, which is gonna be real important this winter. But we may not need it, because Andy just guaranteed the power's out going.
Sell them, get rid of them.
CWSS is working and, and doing hydrant flushing throughout the community, the smoke testing started back up again for the different areas, and of course, we hope to find some of those areas of infiltration. Longtime VIP at VIPS participant Morris Hirschberger passed away, I wanted more to know that, as well as last Thursday was his funeral, and thank him for all his time and service to our community. Part-time detective Katrin has now been hired as a full-time vacant position in the Police Department, starts on the 28th. Two personnel have achieved firefighter one officer certification through the state in the fire department, which the chief of today is a big deal with a lot of our crew getting those certifications done. And their crews participated in the SWAT fed, or SWAT feud with the PD to help raise money for the shop with a cop event, and the chief Sullivan wanted me to point out that yes, the fire department beat the police department. And that new sauna that, that was talked about earlier, this, this sauna is a little different, because it has the healing component and everything that they're gonna have in it, so if you're gonna find out where Brad's at, he's in the healing component sauna. The community development, 46 new single families, and additional one ready for pickup, so we see the single families continuing to come in. The Lock Combination of the former hotel there on 291 has donated that to the city for the Royal Street Project, and so we're thankful for them working with the city. And then the community development also turned in for a historical preservation grant as well. Hopefully hear more about that early next year. And then December 6th is a big industrial site visit with site consultants with the Missouri Partnership, that Jim will be leading, and staff will be heavily involved. And the important thing about this is, the premier sites will also be eligible for the industrial site development grant. And so that's additional monies that make these industrial sites more shovel-ready, if you get those grants that are involved with that as well. So with that, your municipal court report is in your packet as well for any reviewing, and that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ratliff. No one from the media here in the room this evening. I want to address a couple of things. I know Brad talked about Morris Hirschberger having passed away. You know what the VIPS mean to me, that was my entree into city service, was as VIPS coordinator, and I was privileged to know Morris and to actually hire him to be a VIPS. He was, he relished in the fact that he was our oldest VIPS, he was in his 90s, but he served for several years as a volunteer for the police department, and shop with a cop was one of his favorite things to do. So I just want to personally extend on behalf of my husband and myself, and the city staff, and the police department, our condolences to Blanche Hirschberger, his wife, and family for the passing of a real hero to the police department. I also see the Cockmans in the room, and I want to acknowledge them, because we have Christmas on the square coming up in just a couple of weeks, and my understanding is that the grandchildren are going to be performing at the Becky Bent Space on Saturday at two, three o'clock?
December 6th at 3:30.
December 6th at 3:30. I've known these kids ever since they've been growing up, and they are amazing, and you are in for a real treat, if you can drop by the Becky Bent Space on the sticks and hear those kids sing. They are amazing. I have the mayor's tree lighting coming up on December 3rd at 6:00 as part of Christmas on the Square. I've done things a little differently this year, I've extended an invitation to city staff, and I'll offer that same invitation to the Board of Aldermen, for your children or grandchildren to join me in lighting the tree this year. If you'd like to do that, just please let me know, because I'd like to know which kids are coming, and I want to know their names. So I hope you'll join us, it's gonna be nice weather, it's not gonna be Buffalo, New York weather, so I hope you'll plan to join us for the mayor's tree lighting on December 3rd at 6:00 p.m. on the square. That's all I have, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion from Alderman- I have a motion from Alderman Zerring with a second from Alderman Turner. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, we're adjourned, we'll take five minutes and come back for work session.
So the...